And elimination.
Yes.
All right, it is now five thirty. We will begin our work study session for the Adrian City Commission for summer fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
She should be coming in shortly.
Okay, so late, and Commissioner Miller. All commission members present except for Commissioner Castleberry as of right now.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in turn going to turn it over to our friends from Lenawee Now who are going to update you all on their Align Lenway project and some exciting things they have in the works in that regard. So Randy or Pat, whoever wants to lead it up.
Hi, I'm Patrick Barbour. I'm Executive Director of Lenawee Now. We have been blessed with a grant for a new workforce development center, which will be happening on the east side of Adrian. And tonight Sheila Blair, our director of that center, would like to fill you in on what it might look like and some of those things. But this is a once in a generation project that is going to be really, really great for the city of Adrian itself.
Thank you. And I've offered a PowerPoint that she'll be pulling up here in a second. So I'll come and stand in front of the meeting. So we mentioned the Align Center for Workforce Development. This is something that Lenawee Now has been incubating, if you will, for several years. We've come into kind of our own now with an actual physical presence, which, you know, I'm going to talk to you about in just a minute. Click the next slide, if you will. Thank you. Some of you may have heard that we received ten million dollars in funding on October first for the center. We're going to start this facility with five full-time staff members. We've got a board of directors that will be meeting for the first time next week. Things are starting to come together. And the chair of that board is Rhonda Linkfield, which many of you may know. She's a local entrepreneur. We have our executive director, which I'm proud to say they've chosen me. We also have a purchase agreement for an east side building, and we expect to be in that building on January first. We cannot complete that purchase until we get that money from the state. It hasn't come yet, even though, you know, October first is the beginning of the fiscal year. But as soon as it does, we'll be closing on that building, and we hope to move in by January first or take possession on January first. It's still not something that I can reveal at this time where that location is, but it will be on the east side and within the city limits. And for future investment in that area, it lends itself to a campus development. So currently, it does have more than one building on site. We will be taking over one building, using it as a classroom space, event space, individual office space. We will have partners in the building, which I'll talk to you about later. But also, we have the opportunity to add on to that campus and build more buildings that would include, like, an industrial training facility, something with a high bay door where we can bring in some robotics, we can bring in some industrial equipment and actually do training like that. We've also been contacted by the Chemical Collaborative, which is made up of about five different chemical companies here in Lenawee County. They want space in that building. They want a lab in that building to train people on. So they're already reaching out to us, which is fabulous. Okay, next slide, please. So who are we? You know, we are a part of other people in the other organizations in the community, but we are going to be that catalyst to ensure the partnership for education training in Lenawee County. So there are other people that are doing similar work, like CSI in Hudson, LASC Tech Center, Michigan Works. We are all approaching this as partners. So we are not a duplication of existing services. We're going to have state-of-the-art training and development. We're going to have consulting services for our building that will, you know, help entrepreneurs, small and medium-sized businesses in a variety of ways. And we'll also have many partners in the building. So if you think about, you know, what people on the east side might need, we're trying to look at this more as a one-stop. So some of the partners that we'll have in the building will include Evite, the Evite Neighborhood Promise. From Medic, you've heard that term before. We will also have, Michigan Works will be in the building. Dr. Phelan from Jackson College has contacted us and said, we want space in your building. Evite is bringing CAA into the building, the Action Agency. So we will have partners like that in the building, and we are very proud to say that we are going to be doing this friendly handoff. It's not something that, you know, somebody comes to the door and we say, oh, yeah, go down the hall, turn left, talk to Sally, she might be at her desk. This is a, let me walk you there, let me introduce you, let me really take care of you to make sure that people coming through our doors are successful. Okay, next. So for the next couple of slides, I want to introduce Randy Agalow, which some of you might know, but he is our development director.
So thanks for having us tonight. We rehearse this so we stay in our time.
Except for you.
No, they're going to keep me. So talent continues to be the number one economic development challenge across the nation, actually internationally. And that's because your young population rate continues to fall till 2034. You got boomer retirements. You got a lot of people who don't work. So in Lenawee County, forty-two percent of those who could work aren't working. And that is a little bit above the state average. The state is in forty-fourth position in terms of utilizing the workforce participation. So we have a challenge. So the center is very focused on this yet. The Align Talent System began in two thousand and seventeen. So the center is not something we popped up one day and said, let's do this. This has been a long time in maturation of how we're going to tackle this issue. Next slide, please. Hello. So to mention a little bit about what Sheila was talking about, we've talked to Ben Nagron, we've talked to folks in the churches on the east side. We are trying to do a couple of things here. And where the magic meets the road is that we want to do a lot of work in the neighborhood, a lot of work with the people on the east side, with Evite Partners and with lots of others, Santa Heights, lots of folks. But we also want to be able to be the corporate trainer in the county. Jackson Community College left their technical training responsibilities here about eighteen years ago. They do not do the technical training that our employers need. For instance, most young people don't know what apprenticeships are right now. They don't know. Either do parents. So part of our job is to work down into third grade, work with parents and work with the workforce to say, there are thirty-seven dollar an hour jobs, which there are here in the county, and benefits under this apprenticeship piece. So the friendly front porch is for folks that are not going to the services that are here in the county because they're cold-looking buildings and the people are not enveloping them like Lynn's going to with the big hug or Sheila or I and say, you're welcome. We're here to work with you, not do this to you, but work with you for the training that you need. And also, companies don't do the training they should do. It's always tomorrow's problem. So it's a two-sided point. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Gannon. I'm a longtime HR executive in Lenawee County. Some of you may have crossed paths with me, but currently I'm working, doing some consulting work with Lenawee Now. Next slide, please. So one thing we just want to point out a little bit about, because we get this question all the time, is who are you serving? Who are the different groups that actually are going to take advantage of the center? So we start out with employers because we know that they have huge need for training their workforce, reskilling, upskilling, the things that they're going to need and that. And also, it's part of that retention question about keeping jobs here, good-paying jobs in Lenawee County is you got to have the people ready to step up. So we see employers as a big part of our audience, business startups. We're going to be partnering with some different groups, Lean Rocket out of Jackson County, in terms of maybe starting some entrepreneurial training that will help local people that are interested in starting a business, maybe how to get it set up, how to help them with the different services that they need, funding to get their business going. So we're excited about that. We're also looking at having what's called the Makers workspace, which is where local entrepreneurs can come and there will be like machinery there, welding, other things that they can start to build their products and start to that discussion. We know adults that want to either, maybe they're looking to start a new profession or they need to get skills in order to improve themselves so that they can move up in their organization or move on to the next job where they're at. And then we know college students, K through twelve. Again, we're not sitting here, educators have a huge job that they have to do, but we think we can help complement that whole effort about giving people in high school or post-high school training that they might need in order to be able to improve themselves or start a career and get on the road. So that's kind of who we see our audience being. Next slide. I love this slide. I'm kind of a matrix check the box thing. So it might look busy, but again, on the left side, you kind of see the different programs that we're offering. We're going to have a huge push on certification and getting people, that kind of thing. Sometimes grant funding to help local employers with training, pre-training and screening, connecting employees and provide consulting wraparound services. And on the top axis, you can kind of see who the audience for those services are, whether it's employers, entrepreneurs, adults, or K through twelve. So this kind of is a nice visual way for you to see who our audience is. But we're excited to get this up and running. It's been going, but this is kind of the next phase, the building, and really getting this out into the local community.
Next slide. So how are we going to do it? Well, we've been developing this idea under the coalition of Lenawee Now, academic developers. We're working with education and training providers. We've actually created a task force that we've been working with, with a variety of people, including employers, to talk about what their needs are so that we make sure that we meet those needs upon the opening of the center. We are recognized by providing innovative solutions to critical industry sectors. I'm sure that you might have heard that we also received recently a half-million-dollar grant for sector strategies throughout Michigan. And we've been doing this since going back to at least 2019 with the Chemical Collaborative. And now we're doing wineries locally, we're doing the automotive dealerships, we're doing healthcare, robotics, construction, minority-owned businesses, and also accounting and HR jobs. So all of that is through the work that we're continuing to do. We also want to leave the efforts of the Align Center with our qualified and experienced people, staff that we'll have. So the consultants that we're going to be using, the logistics and project manager person that we're hiring, all of the positions will be geared towards excellent customer service for long. Next slide. So we want you to join the journey. Not only do we hope that you're out there promoting what we're doing in the community, we want to see you at events as well. We hope to come back here a little later than the end of February and talk about some more specific things that we want to do in partnership with the city. And we are open to any questions that you might have.
I have a question about, Randy, you said forty-two percent are not working in the city or was that a county? That was a county who could be working, so I assume that's like eighteen to.
Eighteen to eighty-eight.
Eighteen to eighty-eight, okay. Wow. Do we know why they're not working?
No, there's a lot of theories about that. We do think, we did get a childcare grant for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to study the impact of the inaccessible and sometimes unaffordable childcare. And that probably has a number of points to it. Our average family's forty-three percent of their salary in childcare. We know that there's some people working from home, so maybe that's statistics statewide is two points to the goal. Those kinds of surveys were done before a lot of people did own businesses. But the other pieces, we're going to find out. But it's a statewide problem, it's a national problem. The national average is about sixty-three percent participation. The state of Michigan is sixty-one.
There was mention of welding. So you're talking about bringing in those types of pieces of equipment and training there, or?
So our plan is to use as much of the facilities that are out there that we can. Tech Center's got about a two-million-dollar welding unit. But if we sit down in our development of the campus and employers need that and need better access to that, yes. Robotics is another piece. The woodworking group that was on Plankways Campus is talking about coming in there and teaching woodworking skills. So they would teach that to veterans, that's their purpose. We would ask them to teach that to communities.
So is there a hard and fast, these are the programs we're going to offer yet that's been developed?
In the expansion of that campus, we're going to have folks working with us like yourselves to say, here's what we need. We've already had the chemical group saying, we want to do our training at that. Chemical industry is critical to Lenawee County. There's six chemical companies. They are into the next economy, they're into the battery economy. They make hundreds of products you use every day. They're a mainstay of our economic structure, and they can't get people to work for them. And one of the reasons is people think they're going to walk in and drop in a vat of chemicals and die. So we've been working on that for years, four videos on here are their careers, here's the safety, here's the good things that come out of these facilities. And they need to do a better job of talking to kids and talking to parents. The parents and students in this county, and you may disagree, but they have a pretty poor understanding of today's job. As I mentioned.
Sheila, you are doing some career fairs coming up. Can you talk about those?
Yeah, so we've been asked to support the schools. Every school district will have a career fair this year. We're doing those, schools choice, either middle school or high schoolers. We've already got half of them done. The other half are already scheduled. So we're bringing in employers. We just did one in Morantie. Twenty-four employers showed up. We're doing some pretty big numbers at each school district. And we're doing this in partnership with the LISC and the schools. And yeah, we're trying to do more exposure to and create a seamless partnership between businesses and schools for that reason.
Sheila, would you mention about the career navigators that we have?
Yes. So we have two career navigators that work in the school districts. They split the county's districts in half. So each of them have that, have six approximately. And they are working in there side by side with counselors, side by side with different teachers who want to get involved. They're the ones pulling in the employers for the career fairs. They're the ones that will be prepping students with their portfolios to be ready for our spring Career Connections Job Fair, where we expect over three hundred people, job seekers, to attend. So covering them with interview questions, with resumes and portfolios and things like that. So they're working every single day with students.
Greg, Judge Shadler ordered twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to go towards a workforce redevelopment program.
That one is for them. I talked to Judge Shadler the other day.
Is aligned with that or not?
No, it's completely different.
Well, so we're going to talk about that, obviously, in a couple of items here. And John may have some examples. The purpose of that, but that is, you're correct, that is the language of the law.
But that's why she is what she is.
I do want to piggyback on your question to earlier that Randy answered, which is, what kind of programs are they hard and fast as far as they have? Currently, we do have a catalog of over three thousand different trainings and certification programs that we can offer to the community. But as far as these other, like, industrial-type trainings, we don't know what that space is going to look like yet. It certainly depends on the needs of the employers, and it could evolve over time. You know, we might have a lot of robotics training that's needed right up front. And then maybe five years down the road, we might need something else. So it just depends on what the local people are.
Will there be any, will there be any, like, access to resources for, like, I know there's people in town that have not been able to start a job because they need steel-toe boots. They couldn't afford it. It's a reimbursement thing. So they weren't even going to get a paycheck for a while. The company would reimburse them, so they couldn't even start because they needed steel-toe boots. You know, there's things like that in some of those industries, different uniform requirements or just different clothing that maybe they don't have. And I know sometimes that is a hindrance to to some of the people that are trying to get those jobs.
Sure. And there's a perfect solution, which is exactly why we want partners in the building. And that is, you know, Michigan Works have programs for that. So what we want to do is we want to listen to, listen to what that issue is, and we want to find a solution to that individual. So Michigan Works is partnering with you? Yes, they want space in the building. Right now, they're actually deciding if they want a double office space or a single. So they're trying to determine what their needs are.
So we're going to start this with Jackson College, their Michigan Works, Evite. We expect to run a space at some point because we think people are really going to like this concept. We are working on cost strategies and working on real programs and real certifications, not just from economic development, but educators from every level, you know, Adrian College, Santa Heights, the community college level. Washnan has already talked about coming down, doing CDL training, which is not done here. We send most of our folks to La Vona or Remrab. We've already talked about some basic healthcare camps. From Attica has about twenty percent of the open jobs every month. There's about six hundred jobs every month open in the county. They have about a hundred and twenty. So it's going to be very needs-based.
To Randy's point, real quick, I'll just say, my directive has always been collaboration. We've got a lot of resources in our county and always have. Unfortunately, many people like to live in their silos, and we are just the opposite of that. We will be totally collaborative with anybody and everybody so that we don't waste resources, but we collaborate to best utilize the resources that are already here. And if they aren't here, then we'll find solutions to make sure that we get what's needed. But it's really a collaborative effort to bring all the parties to the table and collaborate as much as possible to find solutions for whatever problems. Because a lot of the problems that we'll see and challenges haven't even been invented yet, but you'll see some of the jobs and other things. About fifty percent of our existing employees will need an upskilling of some sort in the next two to three years to stay relevant. So collaboration is the key, I think, to making everything work as well as it can, and we will be that entity to collaborate.
And we're adaptable. So we want to move this into the future. When you look at young children that we're trying to inspire through these, you know, career fairs, when you look at elementary kids, forty-five percent of the jobs that those elementary kids will eventually have don't even exist yet. So we need to be agile enough to make the changes to continue to make sure that Adrian and Lenawee County is up to par with, you know, other counties like Washnan. In fact, we have this great epic program that we're creating, and our partners in that are other states. I mean, Adrian is one of the places that we're doing it, but other places are Houston, big cities.
St. Louis.
St. Louis and Adrian, Michigan. So we're bringing this program to Adrian. It's project-based, learning for students. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, moving on with our agenda.
That's the city attorney to kind of sum up where we're at and the issues that are always. I told you, who were here will remember the mayor spying some documents of the request to payment share that turned out to not be well-advised and mentioned that at that time that there were other entities that have approached her in a similar fashion. And you all asked the city attorney to look into that and come to some conclusions. I asked John to be prepared tonight to report on that for you. And so John.
No, thank you. Madam Mayor, commissioners, good evening. I did do a little background of homework with, or homework with regard to the certification of consolidated plans that were signed by the mayor. First, you may recall that we did do formal correspondence to Department of Housing and Urban Development and to those who had requested. I think one was Housing Help of Lenawee, if I recall correctly. Those who had requested, the mayor signed those certification of consolidated plans. We do not have a consolidated plan. The county does not have a consolidated plan. So we suggested that those were signed in error. The mayor had indicated she did not know but whether or not there were some more entities that she may have signed other things for others. I'm confident that there have been no other certification of consolidated plans signed. I did get an email back from Santa Heights University indicating that the mayor had signed a support for some congressional funding that they had on the table. That is strictly within her right to support their request for congressional funding, so to speak, as it is with any of you and your all commissioners, if you want to support things of that. So the federal government has our position. I don't believe anything's come of it. We have not heard back. And I would suggest that, out of due respect, we close that issue unless you have any questions. I don't believe the city is going to be impacted adversely by what the mayor did or any of the people on whose behalf she signed letters with regard to the consolidated plans. I think it's all going to work out. They can jump through an additional hoop if necessary, but I believe it's possibly time to turn the page of theology.
And we did, the mayor did indicate to us that the other entities that she can recall were the two colleges and the Croweswell, that they were in the nature of what John mentioned that had done for CNN letters of support as opposed to any kind of certification. And we did not receive any. She emailed each of them asking them to send us the related documents. We received them from CNN. I don't believe we ever received any response from part of all of them. Like John said, it's fairly common for me in my position of mayor and hers to be asked to sign a letter of support for things. That's very different from what happened with the county. So don't have a level of concern related to those kinds of, right? Correspondence of, in fact, that was.
Okay, we really appreciate you looking into our best interest.
I forgot to say one thing. The Croweswell did call me a month, a month and a half ago. I'm sorry, I had forgotten about that, indicating that there were no certifications signed under BF. It was a support letter with regard to a program. My apologies for not knowing yet. They did get back in touch.
Thank you for looking into it, Madam Mayor. Thank you for cooperating with that. Appreciate it.
John, is there guidance that can be provided so that as we go forward in the future, either the mayor or future commissions know the difference between signing a support letter and a certification letter? And what steps should be taken on that front?
Yeah, that's a really good question. A support letter is something that's more of a subjective basis, that you agree in principle with the program that's taking place, that you're not certifying something as being accurate. that you agree in principle with the program that's taking place, that you're not certifying something as being accurate or in compliance with rules or regulation of either a federal, state, or local government. If you're asked to be assigned something that you're uh, that the city is in compliance with something, either federal, state, or locally, I would urge caution, just pass it by. Pass it by to you. Pass it by. It's not gonna cost hardly anything to have me look at it very quickly and and give a quick heads up to the commission. But that's a very good question. If it's something objective, like we're certified with the plans and compliance uh, with a consolidated plan, that's a little something different, quite frankly, yeah.
Speak, I was asked to do a letter of support and I went straight to Greg immediately. I said, no, I'm going to Greg before I do anything. And it ended up being that that's not what they really needed. It just would have been a letter of support. But by going to Greg, we were able to figure out, and that is one of the things that's on for a resolution tonight, and it shouldn't have been a letter of support coming from me anyways. So that's our rule of thumb. They're just going to Greg and John and everything. And so we were able to iron that out, even though it wouldn't have been that situation, it was still the right move to do it the way it's happening tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, but it's far better for you all to speak with one voice as it relates to those kind of requests too. That are just requests for support. And so we do have that resolution on the agenda tonight, uh, which you know, the problem with these things is that they come in often at the eleventh hour and we're not trying to schedule them for an agenda. An application deadline. And that is sort of the case with, I'll I'll just mention that. So we're, we have it on the agenda. We have to have to put that on there. On the regular agenda because uh, we haven't discussed it before here at the work session. Uh, the investors who acquired the Telegram properties came to us and wanted support. Or their applications, for their request of the county land bank to apply on their behalf of the state land bank for white elimination program funding to tear villains down on that property. Now they, some of you will recall, they presented to the city commission uh, a request for support in that regard uh, once before, and we did pass a resolution supporting the full cleanup of the property, which was intended while with Eagle as an audience. But this is a little different. This is an actual grant application. They may or may not convince the county land bank. They have a special meeting tomorrow afternoon. May or may not have convinced them to apply on their behalf, but uh, we certainly support that. Some of you will recall that there was an ask of us uh, at the private meeting, and this would more than cover that uh, that amount. And so we, we drafted a resolution and hopefully you all got the chance to read that by itself and then to the reasons, I was just gonna think, yeah, it's just a little bit of holes. Particularly as it relates to leveraging our grant opportunities around enhancement activities that we have going on down town. Uh, that's the right way to do it. That's the best way to do it. It speaks much more loudly to the agency where it comes from the legislative body as opposed to any, writing, you know, my opinion or from my, you know, my personal position on something like that. Uh, if time permits, that's always. Any other questions on that matter? All right, moving on. So we have had uh, something that we've known we had to take up and work on for a while, uh, the disposition of funds that we're holding sort of in trust for the residents and others, uh, could be business owners potentially as well who were affected by the Crimson Holdings owner problems. So it kept going on for over a year. And uh, Judge Shadler part of a consent judgment that we entered into with them, but also requires the uh, uh, installation of the scrubber system. And I go in court monitoring after the installation of the scrubber system, which Eagle is holding during our next week. He ordered funds to be administered by us uh, to remediate the negative effects of that was a problem. That's going to be a total of a hundred thousand dollars. But uh, it comes in two installments. So we currently have fifty of that. In a year from the date that we received the first. In addition to that, uh, separately, she held a contempt hearing for Crimson Holdings. And that you're hearing word is the Facebook. Some more funds aside, twenty-two thousand and change, also for the benefit of East Side folks who were affected by the problem. With a little different language, however, that was contained in the consent judgment. So I'll let John talk about what he thinks that exactly. But uh, in any event, we have to develop some criteria for how we're going to use those funds. And I presume that you will want to do some engage, public engagement on that as well. So I think uh, we have a couple of things to talk about. You know, ideas about what those criteria might be and then how, what the form of public media related to uh, that might look like. The mayor and Commissioner Gauss and I had a chance to meet uh, last week, uh, setting the agenda and just talk about this a little bit. And we were kind of brainstorming about how do you target? How do you make sure that i- if you are doing, for example, a survey, how do you make sure that you're getting responses from the people who are actually East Side residents and property owners, business owners? And and we thought about, even though it's very old school, doing a mail survey because ensure that you're sending it to the uh, people who were affected as opposed to an online survey. Where responses are coming from. So I'll just throw that out there as such, as an idea, but yeah, in the past, we've talked a lot about maybe uh, a grant program that would model a revolving loan fund, but would not be a loan, would be a grant or pairs to uh, homes or other structures on the, in the affected area. I think that uh, something that we have to think about determining what the, what the radius of properties that are.
What do we consider the area that's affected? Did Judge Shadler say that? Did you give any guidance?
Uh, I think our friends at Eagle would probably have an opinion on that. So they did some substantial modeling of the owner issues over the course of that event, and we could reach out about in that regard. But uh, this is the time uh, for you all to uh, begin those discussions. There's just the beginning if we really started on this at all before now, but I will with, uh, I will first turn it over to John and let him talk about what he thinks the judge, he has not, which is always the
No.
Acute, but then I, uh, let let you all do the, be giving your deliberations.
No, thank you. Um, by way of very brief background, it's uh, tomorrow will be one year since Judge Shadler issued her first uh, judgment in favor of the city against Crimson Holdings following an evidentiary hearing uh, regarding the nuisance orders, quite frankly. And then you may recall, we had some continuing problems with those orders that went back to court. Um, uh, early, mid-April, May, we had a evidentiary hearing that uh, went extremely well for us. Some admissions were made with regard to uh, whether or not they were complying with the order of Judge Shadler as to the hours of operation and the like. And then we uh, had a full-blown uh, another hearing in which Judge Shadler found them in contempt of her prior order. So in the first order, and we have to remember this by way of background, we appear before her every two weeks on nuisance abatement hearings. For instance, this afternoon, we were in front of Judge Morgan on, I was six or seven. We'll be in front of Judge Shadler next week. And uh, in con- conjunction with these meetings, we schedule our nuisance abatement hearings with the local judges, so I can be there. And oftentimes, what we hear is that a lot of residents, especially on the East Side, like, don't have the funds necessary to remediate some problems that they have. Cutting the grass, easy scrape and paint jobs of accessory structures like garages, removal of debris um, from outside the homes, things of that nature, repairing easy things, not full-blown plumbing, electrical, things of that nature. So in her first order, uh, she gave us one hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand that we have, said you can do anything you want with those monies. In her most recent order of September of this year, she gave us uh, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars at our request, which was one hundred seventy-five dollars per hour for the hundred thirty hours of violations that she found based on our evidence that we presented. They were operating outside the scope of her order. So we have twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. She's asked us to develop what she described as a workforce mediation program that I believe she wants us to target people who are underemployed, who might need a little work, who have a lawnmower, can do some easy tasks for residents and target residents who have violations at their particular homes. Not going forward permanently, not somebody to cut your grass once a week, but somebody to give you a help on fixing the railing on your porch, getting a garage painted for a few hundred dollars, getting a couple of broken windows fixed, things of that nature, that you don't have to call a contractor and wait for it to really get the process going and make it a lot easier for people without a lot of headache on the part of the city. So what my reading of uh, because she makes the same comments all the time to me when we're in court, what can we do to assist these people? We refer them to various places and the like. But I believe that she'd want this money spent on people who have access to hammer and nails, who can help out residents in a prompt manner so that these violations go away. We would uh, be willing to dismiss them without the payment of fines and costs in certain circumstances, because right now, each violation is usually a hundred seventy-five dollars per violation that we ask for and we get. And to help homeowner homeowners who are down on their luck for whatever reason, have had some illness, need a little bit of extra push, a little bit of extra help. And uh, again, not as a permanent thing, as higher somebody's or landscaping company, give them a little assistance with uh, cleaning up debris, getting it hauled off, getting a quick little mini dumpster over there to help people out, get rid of some uh, rubbish. That makes sense.
I love the idea of, for me, it would be starting with getting rid of the rubbish, as you say. So if we, if we started with Edison Street and just went down the street and who's, who's been picketed for couch on the front porch or whatever it is. Going street by street and say, we got this for you. We can clean up your yard at no cost. And they don't have to do anything really, except say, yes, take all of this.
And is it the city resident on the east side that can pitch the idea to the city to say, okay, I got a mower. I can cut the grass. I got a cart. I can move that piece and does that apply to, you know, our young entrepreneurs?
It would absolutely apply to them, a- absolutely. That we'd wanna find some people who uh, the handyman around who are are willing to do things effectively and efficiently of the young high school uh, lady or gent with a lawnmower who wants to do something. Absolutely. I I think she would love to tickle pig with those types of programs, quite frankly.
So is it, would the city be hiring those people or would the homeowner, I just, liability concerns me a little bit?
We'd have a standard release. Sorry to interrupt you. We'd have a standard release, so to speak, just that this is being done uh, using grant money, money, so to speak. Not assuming any liability and under the broad cloak of governmental immunity, uh, we'd be well protected anyway. But uh, they'd have to sign off the homeowner that, in exchange for this free service, they're waiving any liability as to the city. Very short, easy paragraph.
You know, I think something too is when we talk about that, that we need more than just a survey. I think survey is fine as a mailing survey, but I think we have to go to that community in heaven for of some kind where people can just show off the voice there and in a very open way that are truly affected by it. I think that if we take it to them, it feels more of ownership of the East End. But let's face it, the East End has been burdened by factors and things that I don't know, I don't need that. Bring it to them and not just mailing it to the city. All say, this is a survey I got from City Hall. They have surveys at that point, so then they don't have to mail it in. They can do it part of the agenda for that. That's just an idea. I don't make it burdens or embarrassing for somebody to reply for something. Make it an easy process that all can understand. And this will build wealth.
I toured the city with the USDA Lisa Hewitt Cruz um, this summer, late, late spring, early summer. And um, she had some interesting ideas about she ate what she did in like East Tennessee or East Nashville, etc. About she used the term rock the block, kind of similar to what Habitat does, except it's outside cleanup, cleaning up um, low-hanging branches, cleaning up um, bushes that are in the right of way. So would it be something that we could put together? You know, like some weekends in the summer where we get volun- kids to volunteer, but not volunteer, but we're gonna pay them to go clean up some of those areas. And people just have to say, hey, I just need a little bit of help here. I need a little bit of help here. And we go just bust it out and get it done. Would that make it easier on people? Do you think that, I'm just kind of pulling out what you just said, to streamline it and make it as easy. This is, we're taking care of this block this weekend and this block this weekend. And what do you need? Let's come do it.
I mean, if you're helping out for the residents in that area, then, then you have to have the people there that are prepared to do the work that they're.
Yeah, would it, if we're just, if we're just coming, like, I don't, you know, hey, tell us what you need. Does that make it easier than filling out a survey or coming to ask? Or?
I think either one works.
Yeah.
But I think pairing them both together would probably be a better solution than just one.
Yeah.
Well, that's my question with the survey and even with a a forum, which of course is a great idea. What are we, what did we want? I have to ask them, what did we want to survey them? Where we wanna put like, we have this fifty thousand dollars.
It's, it's not that much money, right? But but once we spread it out to all of the affected area, it's not that much money. So.
Oh, I should point out, I think it would be a really good idea if we kept some, a small portion of this twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty aside, so that in the future, when we go in front of Judge Shaler, Judge Morgan, so it says, you know, your honor, I I've got this ticket, I can't afford it, my husband's been sick. And we've got a little pot of money where I can say in court, you know, your honor, we've, I'd like to refer them to the workforce mediation program. I think it would buy us a lot of goodwill with the residents, with the court as well. And I should also point out that the residents on the east side, you know, there's a uh, I I'm not at liberty, I don't have the final numbers yet, but there is a class action lawsuit pending uh, by various residents against Crimson Holdings that recently underwent mediation with a retired uh, chief judge of the US District Court, Joe Rosen. And uh, my understanding, there's gonna be a substantial settlement too um, for class members uh, within the city of Adrian. And uh, it may be seven figures.
Wow.
Um, so stay tuned. I'm not uh,
Maybe two thirds of seven.
Well, you're exactly, you're right. The, the plaintiff attorney is uh, out of Ann Arbor. There may be uh, two thirds of seven figures uh, distributed to residents within the geographical area based on uh, some type of model.
Should we hang on to all of this for that then? Like what you said, I like the workforce remediation programs. If, in wait for that settlement to come out?
No, I think for the judge, we need to define, uh, get into process. Uh do a survey, do a public forum, are great ideas. Put our failures out.
I think, I think holding on to the twenty two seven fifty. And dispersing it through the court, I mean basically, you know, as they go there, I like that. And I think the judge liked that, uh based on conversations I've had with it, but um. I think that's perfect and that way she can see. Here's the twenty two seven fifty and how it's being dispersed. We're gonna use it for this guy's problem, this lady's problem over here. I think that's. Good thing for her to see in person.
Agreed, and you know, there's no problem with doing a survey and reaching out as well, to find out what's going on. In a neighborhood and what monies are used for um. And we could create an easy application form when we're in court. That if they need help with something, you know, here it is, Judge, I'm referring him right now, so and so. Here's the business number, the contact information. And uh we'll get them help to get their lawn cut within the next two months. Or their fence, their new fence.
Matt's idea about. Also echoing on the fact that we don't know what we don't know, because we we don't live in that neighborhood. So is there an opportunity for us to listen to the residents that live there? And then based on the feedback that they provide, then we can begin to start formulating a uh. A survey, because I know at the recent um. Forum that they had on housing shortages. You know, the, one of the major factors that people move out of their house is uh noncompliance with ADA. So Francine and Lisa were talking about, these are little fixes that can take place in a house. That then keeps them here instead of looking for housing. So, you know, that's rotary built ramps, you know, so that's an opportunity to ramp, truck porches, those sort of things can easily be knocked out.
I know somebody that just left the side of it. I think we need to be clear that we're, we have to separate the fifty thousand dollars to with the twenty two thousand. So the twenty two thousand workforce um. Mitigation.
We're duly.
I, I think, I do that, and I like.
To me, I do, yeah.
And I think the judge was looking at it separately.
Yeah, and that's something that we could get started.
At your discretion.
Right, but.
Um, whereas the fifty thousand, I would, I think for me, that's when we really need to know what do the residents want with that. Do they just want a thousand dollar check? Is that really what they all want and let them decide what to do with it? Do they want us to administer it to some kind of um upkeep of their properties? Or like, you know, go around and clean up all the garbage. Stuff on everyone's porches if there is that. Um, so I think, you know, we. If we could get the twenty two thousand dollars in motion quicker. Then I think we should do that, but that, again, that's my opinion, whereas that fifty thousand, let's do a forum and see, what do you guys wanna do? Where you, you're the ones affected by it.
Do you, oh, I mean, I don't know if this is even plausible. But could it be something too, as if they really just wanted? That money, is it something where it could go against their taxes, so they don't have to pay their taxes? I don't even know if that's an option, I don't know.
I wouldn't go there.
Okay, that's why I asked.
I wouldn't start making exception to the payment of local property taxes.
Well, probably a lot of them are rentals.
Yeah, true.
Yes.
Now, property owners who are renting out their properties weren't necessarily as skilled as people living. So he's always.
One thing, question I have is that. If we're gonna hold it all back, I see that as not solving the problem right away. I see that a lot of, there's lots of knowledge, we can ban how it's ever caused. Because you have to go to court, we have to issue the summons, we have to have a later to nail that up. So I would like to see some that can be preventative. And yes, some that gets held back. Because we stop, if, you know, we send them a letter that we're gonna write the citation, you can apply for this, just an idea coming on. You know, so you apply for that, we give it to you, it's done, we don't end up in court.
And Mr. Elliott makes a good point, sorry to interrupt. I suggest that this should probably be geared to people who live there, not necessarily the landlords, the absentee landlords.
Yes.
With due respect, we are having so many problems with absentee landlords.
Mm-hmm.
Within the city and registering rental properties, keeping them inspected. Um, things of that nature, it is a huge, huge struggle. We had another one default today. By not showing up in court and giving maximum fines and costs. But uh I think the judge would be much, much happier. And the distribution of funds to those who physically live there. As opposed to somebody less in Ontario or California. And we're seeing people from all over the country now who have purchased real estate since the crash. In the city of Adrian, internationally as well.
And just, just to be certain, it's not the Sunning Side neighborhood, because that's the other side of the tracks and outside of the city, it's city property owner.
Yes, within the city of Adrian, yes.
Would scholarship opportunities for our uh youth that are heading off to college be an opportunity as well?
It may be under the first order where she's given us broad latitude as the fifty thousand dollars. Or a hundred thousand dollars, fifty now and fifty next year. So to speak, not with the twenty seven thousand.
And I think that's a decision that. The residents are gonna have to help us make.
Yeah.
And and. You know, the s- a survey while we discussed it, you know, at the meeting last week, that. That that might be a good way to get some important, you know, list five or six suggestions of how they may think about it and then. Another section where they could make their suggestions. I still like the idea of a forum. If we do a forum or a community town hall, however you wanna refer to it. We need to do it on the east side, we need to do it somewhere near. The people are affected, we can't do it down here at the library or here in the chambers. We need to do it where they live.
I gotta believe it's.
That's what I was saying, merchant building, if only twenty five people show up, there's room for them, if a hundred people show up, there's room for them, that's that was my thinking as well.
I I would also think it's important that uh we make sure that the communication takes place in English and Spanish. And that uh just like Eagles doing with the uh forum on Saturday, that there's a professional uh translator there as well.
And we may even wanna include a Zoom opportunity as part of it as well.
So can we start scheduling that then, maybe right after the holidays? So. That we could start implementing the fifty?
I mean, we might have a spot on January first after uh our first presentation, that uh is a nice location that's rooted in the east side as well, that we could use.
Yeah, I think we need to schedule it.
Yeah.
We could also maybe do it during.
Yeah, or the water center. But that's just farther away.
It's right there, it's parking at the fairgrounds. You know, like I said, you get twenty five people, it'll accommodate if you get a hundred and fifty.
Put a thing up for the fairgrounds uh lighting thing and you don't let us shoot it there.
There will be a price for you.
Sure we can negotiate that. I would hope.
But you feel like you have enough direction?
Um, I do, then the direction is going to be that the city will schedule. Uh in short order, a community forum on the east side to discuss the allocation of the uh uh. First fifty thousand dollars. And if I read you correctly, that the workforce remediation program that. We uh I work with the city administrator and staff. To develop, to present to you a proposal with regard to a simple application form and release. That we can give to affected people during court hearings. As uh you know, Jake said a lot of the hearings, Jake Vrindala should say Leslie Love. Lynn Preston uh to give to them. Certain people, we can recognize who means, believe me, it's uh.
And and would we know the effect, you know, that it's knowing what the area, the radius is that we're, you know, that is the key and also. The reason we were talking about the mailing survey is one. Um, complaints I get a lot from um. A, the people that don't have internet, but B, the elderly who a lot of them don't use smartphones or check that regularly. Is that, you know, we need to let them know about this forum, not just through social media, because they're not gonna necessarily know, and that was my concern, so even in this. Setting up this forum, you you know, it needs to be a mailing or I don't know if it's something on their door or somehow we gotta let them know. That that is even happening and we can't rely just on the website or social media, because there's quite a few in that affected area that maybe don't have access to internet or just don't use it.
I think we have. A lot of resources, like on the radio, the radio programs and things like that.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're not gonna charge a lot to announce something like this.
We've got two radio stations and a newspaper sitting here, so I'm sure we can depend on them to help us disseminate information.
Yep.
I would hope that we could.
Yeah, just to make sure that they, they know. I wanna make sure. Everybody knows.
The only, the only issue just to clarify, so with the workforce redevelopment. You have an individual that wants their house repaired for an ADA issue. Um, they can't come for that money because they're not currently through the court process.
The way I'm thinking is that it would be for those on the east side who are within the court process, I think that's the, what the judge would like to see. Those who have been issued violations to help them get out of it. Um. But it's. Either could work.
The fifty could go to the pro.
Fifty is another hundred fifty in a year.
Yeah.
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 But then the constraints of what we come up with. Like. Forum about that. Well, I, you know, I will reach out to fairgrounds and. When we can uh. Have access to a building out there and I'll I'll talk to Eagle, I mean, fair. We we've been able to smell up here at City Hall as well as. I don't know how you draw. It's difficult to draw lines, you know, where people weren't anymore affected by. The judge was. Specific to the east side, and so we understand with the east side. I don't know if we're gonna try to define a more narrow radius than that, but I'm. Skeptical about the worth of that, I guess, I can ask Eagle's opinion on, but. It 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 was very much. Depending on people's circumstances, you know, those who had, you know, central light over there, but weren't as affected as those. Who had to have their windows open, so.
And it's depending on the way the wind blows, because I smell it at my house, depending on.
Right, any given day, but you know, there are obviously prevailing winds.
But there there are groups of, or. A lot of residents that were affected by it every day.
Every day.
And it was a problem, particularly in the summer, they couldn't open their windows, they couldn't enjoy. Life in general, so. Um, and those who were closer were more affected, so I, but again, I I understand the struggle trying to define. What the area looks like, but to me, it's not, the east side starts at, you know, the east side of Main Street goes all the way, or even Winter Street, I guess. You know, we're not talking about downtown, we're talking about, you know, deep into the east side. Thank you, thanks, thank you.
Uh, you had indicated last time you wanted to continue your. Deliberation regarding.
Here is the breakdown of, I can't get it to the kind of issues, sorry about that, but. Here is. How long the committee was, all the million of people on the committees from before. Um, Gordon, oh, did I get one? Okay, let me find it.
Thank you.
Bye, made it up, uh. It was very extensive, as you can see, they just did a week long celebration, that is what D'Comcy is doing as well. Um, so that's just to give you, this is, this is the, the large booklet, you know, this is back in the days where everybody was reading a lot of literature, and so this is a very. Hefty book, um, they had a lot of ads to help pay for that. Um, things like that, but I wanted you to, this, the museum, let me borrow this, so that we could take a look at this. So they had like different divisions within it, which I think was great, it's just a lot of people. A a lot of people, and um. You know, the the one thought I've given it more thought the last couple of weeks and. One thought at least I have is that it it really needs to be representative. This, the the, the committee, the the groups that come together for this vice and talent. Needs to be representative of our community, of our community, whether that's ethnicity, whether that is um age, so what I mean, like, I mean. There probably needs to be some college age. Or maybe high school, but maybe college age, like students on there, there probably needs, you know, there needs to be some elderly, like so on that age, there needs to be. You know, um, different sex, there needs to be, um, you know, there needs to be somebody from at least, you know, several people from that Hispanic community and from the Latin, you know. All of these different communities that make up, it needs to look like our community so that. When we have a celebration, it's. Bringing everybody together, everybody has had a a. A part of that and they can, they can feel that ownership. And I don't know hardly any of these people, and it's weird, because I lived here then, and I don't recognize all of this, I mean, I sort of remember this, I was very little, but I. Don't, I don't know hardly any of these names on here, so that was kind of odd to me, but um anyways.
So we, like. I was looking at some of the uh. Communities that Commissioner Banky sent to us and looking at other ones and. Um, a lot of those. Organs, or those cities asked for volunteers to be on a committee. And then you can divide that committee into subcommittees to do some things.
Um, which is what I think this was.
I think it was, it's see that, like, you could go right on their website and throw in, like, a request of. Ideas or events, things like that, um. A lot of them had a logo created, we, you know. Have people pitch in to create logos and have like, well, I don't know, voting on that or something and um. But I I think we have, I, so I. Mary and I always joke, I'm totally ADHD, so once I'm in a rabbit hole, I'm not coming out for a few hours, so. Um, I was looking at the history of Adrian and, you know, our city band was founded in eighteen thirty eight, there's like so much cool history here and things that that have. Been around, um, you know, almost as long as long cars that were built here. Um. There's, I just think there's a lot of really neat things that I think it. One time Adrian was the chrysanthemum capital of the world.
Well, and it was the fence capital, it is.
A little bit fooled by that today, or you know, my mom had brought it up before and. Got this digging a little bit more, there's a, there's some really neat things that um. I I think we could get some, we have a very creative. Um, diverse community and I I think asking people to be a part of it will. And create a committee would really be beneficial. But I also think in doing that, you know, what is the city sponsor a week long event? But. There's a lot of organizations in this community that I think would like to hold their own events, so if we have a calendar of events that are, is, that the city supports that calendar. Um, and a lot of the organizations for their own events, but we can support that as in a calendar would be. You know, really important to.
You know, I sent the the information out and, you know, everyone did have the logo, so I think that's, you know, one of the, the common threads there, a lot of the communities also had. Um, historic tours, and I know we have those in place already. Um, some were self-guided tours, others were more guided tours. Uh, opportunities around there, club, uh committee membership wise, I could only find one that had uh opportunities for that. Um, but there there's a lot of neat information from the community input piece. Where they could record online their own history.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that would somehow become part of this celebration and recorded somewhere for for the future. Uh, there was um. You know, buried with, whether they had fireworks or downtown or drone shows, those sort of things. Uh, a couple did time capsules, um, I would just be cautious of those, cause. Uh, how many, Matt, we lost of time capsules over the years from the school district of, oh, we think we buried it here. Of course, everyone retired and we had no idea where the one at McKinley was, uh, those sort of things, but uh we did open the one that was in the, in the cornerstone of Garfield School. And it was pretty remarkable from nineteen twenty seven and, you know, soldered. And it was pretty remarkable from nineteen twenty-seven and, you know, soldered into a copper, uh, uh, vault and. That was, that was pretty cool, uh, on that front. And then of course fundraising components of it, of. Selling swag or I think one community had one to two hundred up on the wall. And you could buy your name on that spot for a dollar or whatever the dollar amount was. So two hundred, you made a two hundred dollar donation. Um, in terms of how much that's going to cost for who the groups are. From Rotary lens, I spoke with Juanes and we're interested in, um, how Rotary and the service clubs can partner. And at least have this on, um, our agenda as we move forward with our project plan.
I think we, we, we even started a little bit today with. We just, you know, Memorialize the Road. Or Cesar Chavez, there, there's so many really neat things that have happened that we can, in this community that I. We, we've gotten so, was one of the biggest cities in the state almost at one time, you know, now.
It was.
Much smaller, but there, there's a lot of really neat things that have happened here, um. I think we could.
And I apologize, I forgot. This is the hundred, that's why I named, but I didn't recognize a lot of them in the hundred fifty. They couldn't give me one. They had a lot of these. They didn't have, they don't know why, but they were struggling with the one fifty that they didn't want to be giving it off. So I have the hundredth one here, but they, it looked very similar. It was just long. They just couldn't give me one. So they said they're going to make me a copy, but it, it was a week long. I did ask that. And that is the one thing that the historical museum did say. They said they know that why Tecumseh is doing a week long and they also suggested. You know, you do that or else you do it. Maybe, you know, one, you know, every weekend of the month and do a month, but they said that you drag it out and every, it gets burnt out and they don't want to keep doing it. And that's why they really said, if you want, if other groups want to take and run with it, but don't. Get it, you need to really condense it and make it. And that's why they've done that in the past. Um, that was their suggestion.
Lad, we can get him on the cat committee.
Yeah, there you go. So it wasn't all the same committees, but it was a lot of people, yeah. But. Um, yeah, he was supposed to send a copy and he didn't give it to me, but this was the hundred because he had a ton of these.
I think we ought to get Lad, bring Lad back to do the hat.
Yeah. Um. But yeah, I, the logo, I mean, they sort of had a logo on here. I mean, they, they, this was their logo. They had a logo on here. It just says. This was the hundredth and it says a century of progress, city bedroom. So I mean, that was their logo, but.
You can see where they're measuring the century from.
Yes. Yes. I know. It was weird how they did it. I don't understand. Yeah.
Well, that was one of these.
Yeah, I know. But then they did the hundred and fiftieth in.
You're looking at.
Because like they did the incorporate fifty-three to nineteen fifty-three, but then they turned around and did the hundred. See, this is what they were telling me at the historic museum. So they celebrated, the incorporated eighteen fifty-three centennial was nineteen fifty-three. Then they turned around and did the hundred and fiftieth. In, in, uh, nineteen seventy-five. So it was weird because they did just turn right back around and then do, because then they went off of the found, the founding. So they did do the hundred and fiftieth in seventy-five. But they did, this was on the appropriate, yeah. But, but the hundred and fifty did go off of eighteen twenty-five. That's what we were talking about.
So if I'm following you, because that was a lot going on. So Adrian was incorporated in eighteen twenty-three.
They, they were founded in eighteen twenty-five.
Founded.
But we didn't incorporate till eighteen fifty-three. So they did the centennial in nineteen fifty-three. But then they did the hundred and fiftieth celebration in. Night, uh, in nineteen seventy-five to go off the eighteen twenty-five.
But what happened in eighteen twenty-five?
So Addison bought land, that was it. That's all he did. And he left.
He left, went right back to New York.
And he took twenty-six to bring sellers.
I have, I, so I looked at that today, the piece of paper. It, it's June eighteenth, twenty twenty-six.
That's when this.
That's when he bought the land.
But I think he has a head of deal.
Yeah, they have it because that, you know, historical museum.
The dates are very confusing.
Yeah, you have a deed or something, right?
Yeah, I have the deed.
Yeah, you have.
Yeah, it's, the dates are very.
If I was museum, the same question. I was like, I don't understand what's going on.
Eighteen twenty-six is the copy of the deed. That, that was what it was ratified by the US government.
Okay, that's. Okay.
The date that they signed up on was eighteen.
What, what, in eighteen twenty-five, he actually, that's why he went back to get sellers to then come back here.
I was like, was he wrong?
No. It's, it's confusing, isn't it?
And I was, yeah, there was a lot of dates.
Did we figure out when the plot, when the first plot is? Um, did we find them? I haven't found it yet.
I just want to be clear what we're celebrating.
Yes, I understand.
The founding of our.
The founding property.
Yeah.
And we're saying that was eighteen twenty-five.
Yes. It says that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm still.
Our seal says it too.
If you look it up in Wikipedia, there's another part.
Well, they are, man, that's factual.
Yeah, it has it. Well, that's funny. I didn't even know. I've never looked it up on there. I don't believe Wikipedia, so I never looked anything up. So.
Where are we going now?
Yeah, so is this something where we, like. Uh, what does everybody think? The week long, like, I mean, where are we thinking with that? Because then that's how you figure out what your committees look like, like, because then you got to figure out what we do from there. You know what I mean?
Like, I, I, I think a week-long of city, as we're like city-sponsored is.
Mm-hmm.
That's all outside of that. I think it's crazy, but I do like the idea of creating, you know, a committee that creates, you know. The NAACP may want to do something, N Society, I do, we have a lot of organizations. In this community that may want to do something that is a part of that. And then we get all that and in a calendar too, so. Everybody has. You know.
And, and another thought I had is like, maybe, you know, the first. Big event of the year, if that's still First Fridays and that's still going, which I suspect that will be, right? So maybe the first, first Friday of that season, like the big one, because you know, like, where are we closing down the streets and where is bigger? You know, maybe that's like the beginning of the hoopla, not necessarily like celebrating, but just kind of ramping everybody up. And then maybe that conclusion is, you know, everybody goes to the Comstock Christmas tree lighting and that's a big deal. And that last first Friday is, you know, a big, and maybe that's like, whoop, we celebrated this year, but the crux of everything maybe is in a week. But you maybe have those bookends to like get everybody excited about it and you have that conclusion at the end. That was a thought I had as well.
Because it does go along that lines of if here's the week of. Uh, city-sponsored events, all those community organizations that want to do an event, you know, now you're conflicting. So, okay, so is that. The Crosswell doing an event on their own that is, you know, the great speeches of the Crosswell that took place or something like that. Um. Sometime that month, sometime that year, any of the, or between those bookends would be nice. And there are some cities that kind of. Had a big celebration, but then they had, like you said, with the, the tree lighting, it was always their tree lighting, but they just made it the two-hundredth. Special celebration.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't, let's not get too excited.
Two hundred golden tree.
Let's get a little more thought.
Yep.
Start thinking of ideas.
So I, I mean, I, I would. Like to, I mean, any community members that would like to start emailing us with some ideas, I, I would welcome any of those thoughts. Um, and I'd like to see us, I would, we will start running out of time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we should reach out to the service organizations to see what their interests might be, what their ideas might be as well.
Probably all the time we have.
Uh, and really quick, before we do that, um, all of the gifts arrived from Japan, um. They are all unpacked. They're all. Out, out now because things were, the way they had to ship it was all a different section. So everything is now all set up. Um, so I guess my question, I know it was suggested, I think by Commissioner Castleberry. Um, how does everybody feel if, you know, we approach the library and ask if we could put it on display? It is Christmas time right now. I would say maybe we wait till the beginning of the, of the. School year, I'm a school teacher, can you tell? Uh, we wait till the beginning of the year. And then, uh, maybe put it on display at the library. How does everybody feel about that? Okay. Okay, so, um, if, if anybody wants to see it in the meantime, it's sitting on the conference table in the mayor's office. It's all sitting out there right now. Um, but, um, you know, and another thought to think of, you know, as we, A, go to the two-hundredth, but just in general. One thing we all saw when we went to Moriama is that they had a really big display case, like in their lobby area. Where everybody could see it. And I mean, anybody can walk into the mayor's office and see it, but who knows? It's there. And I'm not going to lie, it's running out of space. Like, I don't know where everything is going to go that just arrived.
We should.
I really don't know. So it could be, look at the possibility of maybe putting it out. We've got a lot of room in that lobby, that whole front lobby area. Yes, and maybe put a nice display case there and, because it needs to be bigger anyways. Because it literally, we don't have room in that little one we have anyways, um. And like I, there's something sitting on top because there's not room for it and now with all the new, and I just feel like that would. Um, be a nice, a nicer way to display it and let everybody in the community enjoy it. But also, you know, Moriama's put a lot of thought and energy into that and to have it more out in the public, I know they would greatly appreciate. And they are coming here next year, so. I don't know how you feel about that, but I was kind of thinking it needs to get out and be more out in public.
Definitely like to.
You want me to talk to the library?
Yes. I can. I am, I'm there all the time. You know me very well. I mean, I haven't been recently, I haven't been reading, I don't have time for it, but I do talk to them all the time. Oh, okay. Um. So anything else before I open up? Sorry. Uh, at this time, we will begin public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first, just to reiterate. There is a time limit of three minutes and I will set my alarm. You're going to hear it online. Um. And, uh, just for the record, please state your name and address. And after we get it, depending, so I'll comment inside the chambers. We will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Ernest Thomas, United States. Um, since I want to, uh, bring this. Community like the government, like the, uh, government. crap. Then let's start acting like it did. You know, trying to, you know, put, put things, put things to vote. For one thing, y'all talking about money. What about all these vacant, vacant buildings? They got two shelters, well, three now, but two. One's a, uh, DB for females and the other one is a, is shadow warm and a men's shelter. What about, uh, the hospital? That big old building, that's vacant. Activate that one. Put the money towards that. Put the money towards, uh, the mall. Instead of bull crap. Use for something that's for a whole community and not for yourselves. Just because y'all in office, I don't give a body. This is United States. Careful others, not yourselves, not your pockets.
There are no more public comment inside the chambers. We will now open it up to Zoom participants.
Kent Oak Cars, one ten South.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess first of all, I'd like to define East Adrian Village as the corner of Main Street and Sienna Heights. Going east and then Main Street going south to two twenty-three and then everything east. Um. With the funding, I would ask that in addition to the Crimson money, the city kicks in another three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I would ask that you have grants streamlined it so it's quicker. We don't have time for meetings. Just put out a grant there for two hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred and a thousand dollars, and then pick a committee of three who can pick. Uh, whether the project is worth the, worth it or not. Crimson Holdings, there's going to be a hearing on the sixth and that's what I'm wanting to talk about. So after I had a Zoom meeting with Eagle today, and I'm going to ask that you do not support the permit application. And this is my reasoning for that. They cannot separate them. They have to approve it all or nothing. And if they approve it all, they have to do the consent agreement and that is to waive the Clean Air Act. Uh, violations. They more or less have to buy into yes, that they think this is going to fix it. Now, if I told you a Chick-fil-A was coming to the city of Adrian, you would know exactly what you're getting. The one thing that you would have to figure out is that what you're going to do with traffic control, that would be your big concern. In regards to the egg processing plant. You had a milk, a milk drying plant and then now it's an egg processing plant. This is more of a research and development process. Because if the owners of Crimson knew what they were doing, they would have come in here with a plan or they would not have built Crimson. Where, where it was. They would know what they're doing. The things that tell me that they don't know what they're doing and that the Adrian residents are more or less guinea pigs. For their research and development is the fact that, and everybody knows this, one of the things they learn through the process is. When the eggs are a certain age, they smell more and now they can't use them. That's a clear indicator that this is a research and development facility and that's why you guys should not approve the permit. For them to continue on with Crimson in the city of Adrian. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will begin the meeting out there at seven oh five.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission for December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath. President. Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
All commission members present. At this time, we will now ask the Lenaway Christian Football State Championship representatives to come up and receive a proclamation. If you would like to introduce yourself.
Uh, Bill Wilhams, head football coach.
Jacob Baker, assistant coach.
Easton Boggs, senior.
All right. So we're giving this proclamation because you won the state championship recently. You actually won it right before our last meeting, so it was a little too close in timing to do a thend, but. Whereas the Lenaway Christian Cougars have gone undefeated in three seasons with two. M, MHS double A, division one, eight-player state titles and this year a division two title. And whereas the Cougars also hold three regional titles and three league titles. And whereas the Cougars won the South Central Athletic Association Conference Title for the fourth time in five years. And whereas the Lenaway Christian Cougars were coached under head coach Bill Wilhams and defensive coordinator Jake Baker. Along with an excellent team of Cougar football coaching staff. And whereas with family and faith, the Lenaway Christian Cougars continue to excel and make our community proud. Now therefore I. Now therefore I, Angela Sword Heath, mayor of the city of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby congratulate. The Lenaway Christian School Cougars football team on their great accomplishments.
Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
The moved, support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz with a second from Commissioner Gauss, roll call, please. Oh, it was Benke, sorry, I'm sorry, I tried to listen and look over. I don't have my my clerk here to help, you know, correct me. Okay, so that was a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Gauss, roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda, resolution R twenty three dash zero forty is from the city commission. It is a resolution to approve the two thousand twenty four meeting schedule of the Adrian City Commission. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller, roll call, please.
Commissioner Benke.
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Sport.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Moving on to resolution R twenty three dash zero forty one from administration. It is a resolution of support for a blight elimination grant, may I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Any commissioner comments?
Greg, you said the meeting's taking place tomorrow.
The uh land bank will meet uh tomorrow afternoon and make a decision.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from both Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for public comment, just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the city chambers first, if you wish to speak, please approach the podium. And you will see the time on the screen, once we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to our Zoom participants.
Ernest United States citizen. Anyway, um. I'm wanted to announce a di- a different type of situation. For one, when you are in a important seat, you're making mistakes. And. The mayor and the lawyer, our lawyer. It was wrong, because when you're in a port seat like a governmental or a mayor's seat presidential. They know right from wrong, yes, we all make mistakes, but that mistake you made mayor. It wasn't, you knew exactly what it was. People, yeah, they they did make mistakes, but no, you, you know exactly right from wrong, they teach you that stuff before you become a mayor, before you become a government. And another thing, taking a trip to Japan. Cause from understanding that's not Japan in Michigan. And for one thing. That's you are a mayor, the city. Mayor who runs the city. Japan's a whole different ballgame that the president of the United States could take a trip to, not the mayor of Adrian. So that's a, that's another slip up you did. Was it an accident that tried, that tried to do that? And another thing, I wanna uh make an issue of. Y'all got one, I'm make this clearly again, cause y'all, y'all just ignoring. People are speeding through a uh school zone. So y'all, y'all wanna blame it on yourselves too? By not having a couple more officers at the school zone, make sure these kids or. Students period, don't get hurt. Or or you work for yourselves. It's ridiculous, you should be real shame yourselves. Taking much ourselves instead of this community taking trips, that's why I can text that's going to, is going to y'all taking trips. It's ridiculous, put somebody in a seat that cares. You got too many darn vacant buildings, that's that's trying to do with the dark thing about. Hospitals and whatnot. Stop worrying about yourselves and worry about the dark community. I'm tired of it. Y'all making these other, these other pains on what to do with the money. This community is being affected with the decisions that y'all making, y'all making very poor decisions. It's ridiculous, have a heart.
Hearing no more public comment, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, we will now begin commissioner comments, are there any comments that the commissioners would like to make? Commissioner Benke.
Just wanted to point out, uh last week I had the opportunity to attend the training with uh the Michigan Municipal League and. Thanks to um Administrator Elliot for getting that set up for me, uh really great uh foundational pieces. Associated with uh municipal finance, with um Open Meetings Act with FOIA. Uh but probably the the greatest takeaway is the opportunity to network with other uh commissioners and city council people from around the state. See what uh some of the best practices and maybe some of the not so best practices that I've heard uh that were taking place there, so um thanks for that. Uh this last weekend, uh WLEN invited me to be on a viewpoint and I had some good calls that came in. Uh I know that Dale was interested and if that wants to be part of a regular rotation amongst us uh as commissioners. Um something that he might uh consider to open up uh if there's interest from from Ireland's too. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanna. I was gonna miss the Christmas tree lighting, um I was out of town picking my son up from Paris Island this last week. Uh but just remember the Christmas tree lighting is Friday and I'm really excited I get to see it now.
And uh we thank you, our our city clerk, Kristy Lowe, for uh still staying with us even though you are not feeling well. And doing it via Zoom and and with the delays and putting up with uh being long distance from us, so thank you very much.
My pleasure, mayor, thank you.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.